All right, let us begin. It's only a couple of minutes before, but we can get going and hopefully we have time that we can ask more questions because of the time allows us to. I'm here to welcome you on behalf of Rockford Forward. I am Neil Blakesley. Rockford Forward, for those of you who aren't familiar, is a group of people who rose out of the Rockford business community several years ago with an interest in seeing that people in our community are informed at election time. Just so you know, most of the people are here tonight, but sometimes there's confusion as though there's some secret organization. I'm in the organization. Tom and Tracy Rich, who are here tonight, are part of that. Candy Lanciaoni, who has Aunt Candy's Store downtown, is in it. Miranda Pell, who has a store downtown, is in it. Dave Rasmussen, who's here in the back, is here. Steve Jaswick is not here tonight. Linda Southwick is here. She's head of the Rockford Chamber of Commerce. Jerry Coon, a past mayor, so was Steve Jaswick, so was I. Tom Crockright, a businessman here in the community. Dr. Michael Scheidler has participated with us in every one of these, and Bill Jackson. So those are the people who are involved in this. No more, no less. It is not partisan in any way. If anybody tells you that, they're being dishonest with you because we're just interested in the business community. This is an important election. You all know that. We have a lot of candidates. That shows it more than anything. And I've been here all my life, all 35 years of my life. I voted in every school board election since about 1970, I think is when I got my first one to vote in. We've never had this many candidates before. So that's telling you things are important and you need to pay attention and tell others what you're hearing tonight. Those candidates, you have their names in front of you. I have to sit back because I can't write them down, but so that you know, we have Tricia Anderson, Bobby Joe Blanton, Jared Folsom. Barbara Helms is not here tonight. She was invited, but is not here. Next one is Andrea Jacobson. And then, well, that's Craig Ladyman. Tim Lewis, Chrissy Ramsey, and Nicole Villagueras. Here's some ground rules for the evening. First of all, the questions that are being asked tonight were solicited from the community. We may have toned them down so that they are not going to be fiery for anybody, but a chance for people to express honest opinions of where they're coming from. They weren't provided to the candidates ahead of time. They are hearing them for the first time when I read them tonight. Each candidate will be given a one-minute opening and statement and a two-minute closing statement when we finish. I will present the questions in order. We'll go alphabetically and rotate on every question or every instance that we have here. The number of questions again will depend on the length of response from the candidates. And where are the notices for time? Who's showing our time cards?
I will.
Okay. Where's Tracy? I heard it. Okay. Tracy's going to raise her hand when you have a minute to go or when you have 30 seconds to go on your various answers to questions. Each question, when we get to it, you will have a two-minute limit on it. So you'll get a hand raised when you're at one minute and a hand raised when you're at 30 seconds. And one when you're at two minutes, when you're done. Unfortunately, because of time limitations, there's no audience questions. But if you have questions for these folks, there are two ways that you can handle it. I believe all of them have a website or an email listed somewhere publicly that you can send to them. And Rockford Forward has a Facebook page where you can forward those questions to us. We will forward them. They will then be published to everyone, the questions accordingly. We won't take offensive questions. We're going to keep these to ones that are reasonable to what this job is about and try to keep it in that context. Lastly, we ask that we show courtesy to all the candidates by being quiet and to those around you by not talking and interrupting anyone. Two other things I want to let you know about, and then we'll get started. First is, the schools have provided some pamphlets about the Millage election that's coming up. They're on the counter. Their hands being shown there on the way out the door if you want to know more about that. And lastly, as you can see, this is being taped. So tomorrow, it'll be available on the Rockford Forward page and somewhere in the next few days, it'll also be on the Beyond the Rock page that's administered through the high school. So if you want to review it, see the questions again, or tell someone else how to see it, it'll be available for everyone on that basis. So with no further ado, we are going to proceed with our opening statements. Again, one minute, and we will start with Tricia.
So my name is Tricia Anderson, and I'm a mom of two kids in the district that attend Valley View Elementary, one of them sitting right here. And we've lived in the Rockford community for just over six years. And...
30 seconds.
Oh, sorry. And I think one thing that you should know about me is that I am a former educator. I taught high school biology for three years over on the east side of the state, and I have all the best interests of kids, parents, and teachers at heart in this race.
I have prepared a statement. So my name is Bobby Blanton, and I want to tell you a little bit about myself and why I'm running for reelection. I currently live in Belmont, Michigan with my husband and two sons. I believe I'm a professional volunteer and commit a tremendous amount of time to projects involving education and children. I currently serve and advocate for children in foster care, work with individuals with disabilities, the elderly, and others. I understand the importance of education. I've served on the Rockford Board of Education since 2018, the Rockford Education Foundation since 2015. I'm a court-appointed special advocate for children in foster care, a junior achievement volunteer for over 10 years, a reading volunteer for individuals with Down Syndrome. Prior to that, I ran PTOs for my son's elementary schools and served in many other roles for the Down Syndrome Association. In addition, I help with children in homelessness. Outside of volunteering, I'm currently a member of Strategy Wealth Advisors as chief operation officer. Prior to that, I was a business owner, which had multiple locations in Grand Rapids and one office in China.
Hi. My name's Jared Folsom. I grew up in central Michigan. I went to Michigan State. We lived in Chicago for 11 years, and we moved to Rockford 10 years ago. I was appointed to the board in February of this year. It has been a great opportunity to serve the community. I believe in community service. I support public education, and I hope to continue to do that in this capacity. I have two kids in the district. They're here tonight, third grade and sixth grade, both in Spanish immersion. I've been actively involved in a variety of volunteer roles. I'm currently the president of our Spanish immersion booster club. I've been an Odyssey the Mind Coach for three seasons, recently joined the Watch Dogs program, which is new this year at Rowwood. I have a deep respect for professional educators because I come from a family of educators. My parents both worked in K-12 public education for 30 years. My older brother is an industrial arts teacher, now an assistant principal at a high school. My wife's family is full of teachers and administrators. I have 20 years of professional experience in operations, quality management, and finance.
Hi, I'm Adrienne Jacobson. I am currently on the board. I was appointed in July of 2021. I've been a resident of Rockford for the last 18 years. When my husband and I finished college and got married, we moved here specifically for the schools and wanting to start our family here and have these opportunities for our child. We have one son who is a seventh grader at East Rockford Middle School. He's actually over at North right now at swim practice, otherwise they would be here with us tonight. While he was in elementary at Lakes, I was active with the PTO, doing some classroom volunteer work. I served on the inner-school advisory council. And once he left there and moved to middle school, I wanted to keep getting involved. And so when opening presented itself on the Board of Ed last year, I applied and got appointed to that position. I have worked for the last 22 years as a litigation paralegal at McGary Bear in Grand Rapids, Michigan. And one of my passions is just organizing, analyzing, and serving our kids.
Hi, I'm Tim Lewis. I've been on the board for 12 years. I was elected back in 2010. Lived in Rockford community for 28 years. Grew up in Pittsburgh. Three children through the Rockford Public Schools. One's 20. She's a junior at Michigan State. I got a 26-year-old who's a law school student at Michigan State, and my son, who's 28, is a state trooper. 34 years in law enforcement. I retired from the sheriff's office back in 2020. And this is going to be my last run at school board. I'm running for the two-year spot to keep some stability on the board. Since I am the longest-serving board, I have the most tenure and the most history. With a new superintendent, I feel that having some of that history on the board side would be a good aspect for that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chrissy Ramsey. That's quite loud. You don't even need that. I actually grew up here. I graduated from Rockford in '99 with Neil and Mary's son, Mark. My husband and I, Rob, decided to raise our kids here because of three really important reasons. We wanted to make sure that our kids have the same awesome educational experience that I received here as a kid. Rockford is a community that evokes passion and creativity, and we are such a collaborative community. We really build, our community is built around our schools. So a desire to continue to be part of that tradition of excellence is kind of why I'm seeking to run. I have four children. One, they graduated in 2020. I have two that are at the high school still. And I've been the Rockford Public School Inner School Advisory Council Chair for the last 13 years. I'm also the chair for Friends of Kent County Schools. My role in that was really just to support legislation that was positive for K through 12, and then also to try to close the funding gap that exists between inequality. So one more minute? Done. Thank you.
So my name is Nicole Villagueras. I have lived in Rockford for 10 years. I have four kids at Rowwood Elementary School. Did my undergrad and my law degree at MSU. Go Green. I run a small business here in Rockford. Just wanted to take a minute to say thank you to Rockford Forward for putting this together. Thank you to my family for supporting me through this journey. Thank you to our community for being so engaged, and thank you so much to all the candidates. You don't know what it takes to put yourself out there in this way. So thank you so much. I mean, we have seven people running for three spots. That says something amazing about our community and about the schools in our community. And I'd like to add, please support the Millage. Please vote yes on the Millage.
We have, yeah, Tim and Tricia are the two that are running for the two-year term. Everyone else is running for the four-year term. So they're not all running against each other. That's the breakdown. All right, let's start with the questions. Since you got the first one, I'm glad Bobby had the first question now. And the question is, and this is the same question for all of you, watch your time constraints. You have two minutes. Are you aware of the standards of security within our school buildings? If so, are you satisfied with them? If not, what changes would you make? Bobby, go.
I think we do a great job as far as security in Rockford Public Schools. It is a priority here, and we have a great team. Can we always do things better? Absolutely. And we are working on that as part of our strategic plan. And I think we are adding SROs at other buildings. And so I believe we all work together here as a team. And so last year, we adopted our strategic plan, and like I said, there is many opportunities for improvement that we are working on.
I'm familiar with the standards of security, and I think Rockford does a good job in this area. I think Rockford does a better job than a lot of districts. I think we're probably ahead of the curve when we think about comparatively to other districts. A lot of improvements have been made in recent history with respect to shatterproof windows, secure vestibules, better training around this topic, and we have a terrific security team in place, and those sorts of things have been really positive for the district. I agree, there's always more that can be done. I know that as part of the 19-bond issue, I think what we'll see in the next year or two is a big increase in the number of security cameras at our elementary buildings. I think currently we have, you know, a few cameras in each building. We hope to get to 10, 12, 15 cameras in each building within the next year or two. So I think that, you know, that obviously is a positive. We've made great strides with, you know, having eyes and ears on our school buses. So anytime there's any kind of incident, we're able to kind of see and hear firsthand what happened. So I think there's a ton of positive things that are happening, always more to do. We got some information recently from the security team about cybersecurity, and I have, my oldest is in sixth grade. This is an issue that's about to become, you know, much more closer to my home than maybe it's been up until now. And so I know we have a lot of learning to do around that topic, how to monitor, you know, device use and those sorts of things.
Yeah, I am aware of the security that we have in place in our buildings, and I feel that we do a really good job keeping our kids really safe. As a parent with a child in the building, I've never been concerned a day sending him on the bus or into our buildings. Our doors automatically lock when the bell rings, and our kids are secure in their buildings. We have vestibules that require you to intercome with our secretaries and get cleared in. If you're coming in as a volunteer, you have to get a background check run. We're doing that same security when we have larger groups of parents in the building for events. We have security officers at our high school and our freshman center who are retired law enforcement. We have a school resource officer. We're adding to that population so that we can respond when there are incidents with discipline or concerns that a student raises about things. Our security is second to none, and Rockford cares about all of our kids, and we want to keep them all safe because they're part of our Rockford family.
34 years in law enforcement, that's one of the reasons why I ran for the board back in 2010. We could walk in any building, not say anything, walk by the office and go straight to wherever you wanted to go. My kids and scouts, Rockford's got the best and the second-largest security team in Kent County. What makes them better than Grand Rapids Public, who has the largest, is that all our officers are retired law enforcement, have some type of military background. That's who we need in there. If there's a threat coming in the building, these guys aren't running away. These guys are running towards it. And I give them a lot of credit because these guys aren't carrying a gun. They're running into, you know, into a battle line. We do have one school resource officer. Almost every school in Kent County has one school resource officer. Rockford's a big enough district that we're talking about adding a second and possibly a third. And where they go, that's going to be up for us to, you know, decide. And I believe, my personal opinion is it's got to be out on the east side of the county because that's the least populated with law enforcement. And I think that the things that we're doing here in Rockford are supportive of a very safe school.
I think I could piggyback on pretty much everything that everyone else is saying here. We are extremely lucky in Rockford to have the security team that we have, Scott Beckman and everyone that works underneath him. But additionally, like others have mentioned, we have shatterproof glass on every first floor of every building in the district. We have vestibules now. I think everyone is constructed, and that is for the safety. Andrea talked about locking doors. I mean, we do a ton in terms of making sure that our kids are safe. Additionally, we spend a lot of time, you know, working on security. We just sat down and had security update with the superintendent and with Scott Beckman. And we talked about ways that we can definitely, you know, protect our children from cyber attacks online, how we can maybe be involved in what they're looking at, and what they can see when we're not looking. So I think there's a lot that could be done, but when it comes to like safety, Rockford is amazing in their investment in how we take care of our teachers and our students. We do a wonderful job here. We're very lucky.
Yeah, I would like to echo that as well. We've got the right combination of physical barriers and personnel who are watching out for our children. I mean, shout out to the office staff who's on the front lines, having to make sure that the only people accessing the building are people that they know and recognize. I mean, Rowwood has how many hundreds of students, and they have to know exactly who is coming in, as well as the background checks and the ringing system. I also want to thank our teachers for making the lockdown active shooter drills not traumatizing to the children. Like, they do such a good job of guiding the children through those exercises to make sure that they are as prepared as the staff in the building. Two things, one, another thing that I think, there's two things I think we could be doing better, is I think making sure that we deal with any sort of fake threat in a really, really severe way to make sure that those aren't, that those aren't something that people play around with. I think that's something that's really important. And also sort of, I was talking with the superintendent about this earlier. Right now, on the website, if you go to the Rockford website, there's absolutely, I couldn't find anything about school safety. Maybe I missed it, I don't know, but I was, I was looking for something on school safety, and there's nothing there. And I can understand wanting to be strategic and not giving away your tactical advantage, but I think maybe communicating to parents a little bit about what, some of the things we are doing so that parents feel comfortable as well.
So I feel like, you know, it's, it's a lot of unfortunate events that happen in Michigan and elsewhere in the country that has districts kind of upping their game when it comes to school security. And I don't, I think Rockford is no different. And so this is kind of the thing that, that drives the district to do better when it comes to security. And, you know, I've seen a lot of recent upgrades with security, just as a mom and, you know, a parent of, of kids at Valley View. Just yesterday, I was, I was ID'd when I was picking up my friend's daughter from BAC. And that's great because she's a child that shouldn't be picked up by one of her parents per court order. And I've also seen the security team in action when the same parent that I'm describing attempted to pick up this child. And it was prevented, and the entire school went on lockdown during BAC. And, you know, I've seen how the security in the schools has come together, and they have great communication, and all this communication to be able to notify schools, teachers, parents, whatever, of a situation and nip it in the bud as soon as they can. Plus the background checks, that is new as of last year, as far as, as far as me being a parent and volunteering in a classroom. We never had to do background checks before, and I love that we're doing this now because it's important. There are certain people that probably don't want in the classroom or should be running a field trip.
All right, the next question, which we'll start with Jared on, is what role do you believe the Rockford Public Schools should play in the mental health of its students in identifying and identifying at-risk students?
Rockford Public Schools definitely has a role to play in the mental health of students and in identifying kids that are at risk for mental health issues. I think that if we are committed to our stated goals and objectives of providing the best possible education to all of our students, then we have to take into account, we have to meet students where they are. And part of that means where they are from a mental health perspective. We know that mental health issues are prevalent among our student population. Those challenges were only exacerbated by the pandemic. And so we have to meet kids where they are to the best of our ability by understanding those challenges and trying to identify the resources that families can get access to to help them and their students deal with that. If the kids are not in a good place from a mental health perspective, they're not going to be able to learn, or not as well as we need them to. They're not going to be able to learn and grow in the way we need them to and for them to meet their own kind of full potential. I don't think that Rockford Public Schools is sort of the end-all, be-all from a mental health perspective. I think there are other resources available beyond the boundaries of Rockford Public Schools. And so I think oftentimes, it's a matter of identifying kids that need help and then making sure they get connected to the resources outside of Rockford Public Schools. But I appreciate the work that we're doing here. It's important. It's in our strategic plan. We've been able to add resources in this area, and I would hope that we can continue to do that.
I think our schools have a very important role in the mental health of our students. All of our students walk in this door every day, spending most of their waking hours of the week with us. And we owe them a duty to take care of them and be aware of what's going on with them. And we can't just provide a one-size-fits-all education experience. We have to know what's going on with our students and how can we best provide services to them. So some of that is through doing screening and seeing our kids having red flags of depression, anxiety, suicidal ideation, other issues that maybe their family's not aware of. And can we make the parents aware of that? Can we help pair them with resources? How can we get involved from a school standpoint? Otherwise, we're failing these kids who are in our care and not allowing them to even succeed as a student in our building. You know, as a parent, when my son started school years ago, he, he was my youngest and only at that time, and he was having struggles that I didn't realize weren't typical for his age because I hadn't been a mom before. I hadn't raised a kid. And until somebody at his school said, hey, this is seeming a little bit out of what we would expect at this age, I didn't know to go look for answers. And once I did that, I was able to get him resources and help him and get him to be the successful middle school student that he is today. And I think our schools and teachers owe that to our kids.
I think we play a big role in it, and that's why it's part of our strategic plan and why we're increasing our mental health personnel. A parent of three, my children, all three of them had some depression over the course of their career. Did they come to me as their dad? No. They're going to be strong, especially my two boys. They're not going to tell me what's going on. They're probably not going to tell their mother what's going on. They're more likely to tell a teacher or somebody else, and I think that that's where our school plays that important role. There are six, seven hours a day if they're in sports. They're at the school, maybe 10 hours a day, coming in early. There's different signs that I think that we can teach our teachers to look for that we do a really good job at. Can we provide them with that mental health treatment that they need? I don't believe that that's the school's responsibility, but I believe that we can guide them in the right direction to help them get that help and find out the way to do it and how to, how to take care of that mental health issue. We play a huge role in mental health, and that's why currently we're taking that so seriously with, with our staffing and education, with, you know, the different classes that we put on Beyond the Rock and the courses that we put on for parents and different things like that, so to show the parents what to look for.
I think it's really important to kind of, to talk to the responsibility of us all in the district to take collective, you know, responsibility for the well-being of our kids. We know that they are going to learn best in an environment where they feel safe, where they feel respected, where they feel valued. So what does that mean? That means we, we talk about mental health. We talk about how we communicate with our kids. We do developing healthy kids that we, you know, this is a really important thing for parents and for kids. Kids are experiencing things a lot sooner than we did, and anxiety and depression is something that's really prevalent and serious. And it is, it's our job to make sure we can identify kids that are at risk for that, and then we get them the resources, resources that we need. I mean, we're lucky in this district to have OK to Say, which is a great, is a great way for kids, adults, anyone to anonymously admit, or to call in and talk about something that could be, could be happy to a kid in our district, and then they follow up immediately, our security team does. So I think it's very important that the district is involved in mental health. To speak to the at-risk part, I had a son, who, Michael, who struggled in first grade with his reading and, and his writing. And so he was put into the Response to Intervention program, which is a phenomenal program that we have at Rockford. So we identify these kids at a young age in elementary school, and we make sure that we get them back on track because they need to be on track by the time they're fourth and fifth grade and curriculum starts increasing, and we expect and demand more of them, you know, from a learning capacity. So I think we have a lot of really great plans. We have resource teachers that are available. We have reading interventionists and specialists, and we have these great programs that can really benefit these kids. So I think RPS already does this, but definitely needs to continue.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely agree with that. I think that teachers and coaches, and teachers, coaches, staff, parent, pro, people that the kids see in and out every day, maybe the kids maybe aren't in front of their parents, are in a great position to possibly identify where some issues might be arising and help the parents connect with resources. I think it's the school's responsibility to create a culture of inclusion and diversity so that kids are OK coming to school, so that school is a happy place for them. That looks like connecting them with communities, like, hey, I've noticed you might be interested in art. Here's this program where you might find some kindred spirits. Or, hey, you're really selling here. That's super awesome. Why don't you go check out this thing? How to keep the kids involved will make, make sure that a lot of those problems are headed off at the pass. The biggest challenge, I think one of the biggest challenges for children today is social media and their interaction with social media at such a young age. I know I've got a daughter who's in fifth grade and shaking my boots every time we have this, this conversation. And the school can help create that culture of safe and responsible social media usage so that all of our kids are driving.
The question of what role should the school...
The question of what role should the schools play in in the mental health issues and being able to identify some of those at-risk students? I think, like everybody has already said, the schools play a huge role in being able to catch some of those warning signs that could be a signal to something that's not OK at home, something where a student is having some kind of an internal struggle. And, you know, they don't, they don't always have home to to have for support. So I think it's really important that the schools not only recognize when there's something going on with a kid, and like Christie said, the OK to Say program is great in being able to be anonymous and relay some concerns that even students might have. But I think it takes a village to be able to, you know, get these kids through the day, and they're at school more than they are at home. And so when it comes to their mental health, I think that, you know, the teachers, they wear a million hats. So, you know, it's it's not just teachers. It's the support staff. It's a bus driver. It's, it's, you know, Miss Jeannie in the lunchroom. It's anybody in school who who believes that there's a student who's just looks like they might be struggling and to be able to identify that and put that in touch with specific resources.
So I think that mental health is a huge concern, and the school district should provide some support. As a CASA volunteer, just watching firsthand the importance of consistent, just consistent adult, excuse me, and a consistent district. I had a foster girl who had attended Grand Rapids Public Schools for a year, and she was thriving and doing great, but she had that one adult that she could trust, and she would go and see that person every day. She was doing great, and in foster care, they get moved often. And as soon as she moved that school, she lost that trust. And so having some support with our teachers, evaluation, so we can recognize some of these traumas that we may not know these children are experiencing is so important. And I think as a district, we're working on that by, we have counseling dogs at all the schools, hopefully in the near future, because that provides that comfort where these children will talk because we don't know what's happening at home. The trauma levels that these kids are experiencing from depression, anxiety, and many other things are just different than what we ever experienced. So we need to do whatever we can to help these students. But I don't think it's just students. Our staff and our teachers are experiencing mental health as well. So we have a huge role to play in education across the board for mental health.
Like me and the rest of you are having a hard time distinguishing any, a lot of good answers up here. I appreciate you folks. It's well responded. Our next question, which we'll start with Andrea, is if elected in the school board or reelected, as the case might be, what would your number one priority be as it relates to the education of students within the district? What's number one?
So my number one priority right now, I think, is a lot of relationship building and communication. And it might sound a little bit strange, but over the last few years, we've seen a lot of our relationships and communication change and shift. We've had parents out of the building. We've had kids at home and out of the building. We've had teachers in and out. We've had leadership changes within our district. And so right now, I think as a base foundation piece, we need a lot of communication and for everyone to be on the same page and supportive and understand what's going on. Ask questions of your teachers if you have them. Have your teachers communicate with you what's going on in your classroom. Hear from your administration because when we have that good communication and good trust with each other, where we can have a back-and-forth dialogue and ask difficult questions and tackle potentially divisive topics, that builds strong relationships. And then that gets us a sense of belonging and inclusion. And when we have all of those pieces and everyone feels that they're heard and a valued part of the Rockford Public Schools family and puzzle, then your academic success follows with that in terms of your testing. But if you don't have relationships or communication and everyone feels like they're just a number or they don't understand what's going on and why things are happening, then that's going to be a struggle. And we're working on that, and we're working on communication, but I think that's a priority for me as a first step.
I think the we're post-pandemic. They say that it's not gone. COVID's not gone, but we have a learning curve. We have a learning gap from all the online learning and not being face-to-face. I think we need to see what our test scores are and tackle how to bring our our students up to where they need to be. I think beyond the the scores, our mental health, that the last question, that's an issue that we we need to keep up on. We don't want any of these kids struggling. If they're struggling in mental health, they're struggling in school, they're struggling out of school. But I think that we need to focus our time in in the classroom and finding what students that got missed in in COVID and help those kids get back up to their learning potential.
Yeah, I'm going to piggyback kind of what Tim had said. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, huge learning losses across the country, right? So we're finally getting kids back into the rooms. Face-to-face instruction is happening. So what are the things that that we need to do as a district? And I think it looks like curriculum, innovative, robust curriculum. And that doesn't just mean new textbooks. That just, what are the programs that we can put in front of our kids? What kind of platforms can we put out there? Graphing programs? I mean, there is immense amount of ways we can teach and relate to our students. I think it's important that we continue to do that. It's really about creating engaging classrooms, right? Where teachers are engaging, students are engaging. When we create learning environments like that, everybody wins. Test scores go up. I mean, nobody wants to chase a test score, but at the same time, we want to make sure we prepare our kids to be very productive members in in society. So I think it's really about student achievement. That's all our number one goal. It's our job here to make sure that we prepare these students to move forward into a world where they can be successful in whatever endeavor they're looking at. That could be a career, you know, a five-year diploma, it could, or a bachelor's, it could be a master's, it could be, you know, I want to, I want to go into the trades. I mean, there's a lot of things that kids can do, and I think it's really just very important that we support and make sure that we give them the tools to be successful.
Thank you. So as Christie said, the primary function of public education is to make sure that the children enrolled are ready for their next step walking out the door. So that does look like closing the learning gap that COVID created. It does look like mental health support that to make sure that children are well-adjusted. And it's, but most of all, it's making sure that Rockford remains a destination district for teachers. We want to make sure to to make sure that we have the proper mental health support in the district, to make sure we can close that learning gap. We have to have the best and the brightest of the teachers and the and the support staff coming here. That means like making sure that teacher pay is adequate, making sure that they have the proper tools, including support staff, parapro, social workers, and making sure that their workload is manageable. Those things will lead to the academic and life success of the children.
So if we're talking about what my number one priority would be for the education of our students in the district, I would say that the the day-to-day learning experience has to be a priority. In terms of academic success, I feel like teachers, when they have the freedom to deliver curriculum in the way that works best for them, that allows kids to make the most connections to the curriculum in their everyday lives, is the best way to allow teachers to teach and students to learn. And, you know, when we relate to the social, emotional aspects of each kid in our district, I feel like having a healthy meal at least once a day is going to be paramount in keeping kids awake, alert, and, you know, able to learn. And I feel like, you know, throughout the day, kids need to have so many different opportunities to to move and breathe and just play and take breaks. I know that sounds, you know, counterintuitive when we're talking about learning, but that's how little kids learn, through play. And so I just feel like when when we when we allow teachers to teach and we allow the kids to learn in the best way possible, then we we end up having a lot of success with our kids at the end of the day.
So I think the number one priority would piggyback onto the last question is mental health. But after that, since we talked heavily on that, I believe that we need to focus on some career and college readiness for our graduates. I have a senior right now, and all of his group of friends, if you ask what they plan to do or where they plan to go, they don't have a plan, and they don't even know what their interests are. So I think we need to be able to equip them with a plan or at least allow them to understand what opportunities are out there. Having a career in manufacturing, I had an apprenticeship program and hired people out of Rockford. I think a lot of students don't understand even what an apprenticeship program is. I had the parents come in probably four or five times just to understand, what does this mean for my student? What do you mean they can work and get paid to work and walk away with a four-year certificate from the state of Michigan? A lot of people don't understand what opportunities are available, and not every student is prepared for college or may not want to go to college. So I think we just need to prepare them for what's next in their adventure after graduation because they are our future. They are the next, hopefully, Rockford community residents that will be sitting here or sitting in the future.
We got some updates or some readouts just in the last week. There's some good news here. Our spring and fall test scores are back to pre-pandemic levels, and we're better than the county and the state. So that's the good news. And how did that happen? Well, our teachers are awesome. They took outstanding care of our kids through the pandemic and in the time since. And so that that's the good news. We have rebounded, you know, faster and stronger than other districts in the county and across the state. We need to stay focused. I see the administration and at the building level, they're data-driven, looking at those test scores, digesting, analyzing, where do we have opportunities? Middle school math, English and language arts, social studies at the elementary school. There are areas where it looks like we've got some opportunities for improvement, and there are there are strategies and tactics being put into place to address those opportunities. And so that's all, that's all positive. So we've talked about a lot of important things that affect education of students. I think the one I would highlight for this question would be, maybe it just goes back to funding. You can't do much without funding, right? And we've had some help in the last couple of years with per pupil funding increases. If we don't pass the non-homestead village, it'll erase those gains, right? We're up 450 per pupil if we don't pass the non-homestead village, which I believe it will. It's passed every time we've tried for the last two decades, but we'll be down 900 per pupil. It'll wipe out the gains, the state-level funding gains that we've made in the last couple of years. You can't, you can't add school resource officers. You can't add mental health liaisons. You can't hire or retain our excellent teachers and support staff if you don't have the funding. So I would highlight highlight that as a priority for the district and for the community to do everything we can to continue to support the district.
Do you feel the district adequately addresses diversity and inclusion?
You're asking me. I know that some of you, maybe not you, but some of our people do not. My daughter's Asian, and we have these questions coming up all the time, and I go back to my my daughter and ask if it ever affected her, and it had not. But did she see it? She did. So I think that we could do a better job in our schools with the diversity and inclusion part of it and and teaching our our children and our students how to how to deal with that. So I, do we do a good job? I think we do a good job on anything, but I think we can do a better job at a lot of things, and this is one that that I think that we can do a better job at, whether it be a different curriculum or or whatever. But I do know that a lot of the complaints are kept secret. They don't tell anybody. So we can't do a whole lot when we don't know what's going on in our community because the kids don't want to be embarrassed. They feel that kind of stuff. So I think we, as a school, got to encourage our kids to speak up. That's what OK to Say is for, and that's, you know, and that's, there's different ways of doing that. So thank you.
I think the district does a great job of of trying to, we definitely need to, this is, this is a topic we need to address in all areas of our life, in all of society. I mean, making sure that every kid that comes through this dormitory, what they believe, what they look like, who they are, how they identify. It's our job to teach them and make them feel comfortable in our school. That's our job. And so what does that look like? I mean, that looks like diversity training, inclusivity training, and the district does that. I mean, they've got, they've got a committee that looks at those things. Can we do better? Yeah, everyone, we always have ways that we can be, you know, that we can improve upon these things. But I think, you know, I think there was some, we did some surveys at the high school, and there were, there are some some kids that don't feel like they are inclusive. So it's our job to then dig deep into that data and go, OK, well, why? And how can we fix that? Because we want to make sure that every kid feels safe here. We want to make sure that we can give them the the education that they deserve, and they can, they can receive that information if they feel comfortable and they feel safe. And I think that's just the biggest, the biggest thing we should focus on.
I feel so optimistic about the future. Gen Z and Gen Alpha are so aware of these issues and so sensitive to these issues, and I think that speaks so highly of them. And I know the district is trying so hard to support the kids in that and lead the kids in that. At the same time, of course, there's always things we can be doing better, but awareness is is the first step, right? Specifically, I think one thing we can do better is to build community. More is caught than taught, right? So through building community through our sports, through our extracurricular programs, where people with different backgrounds come together over a shared interest, will help solve a lot of those problems. And that's an active, proactive piece that the school can play in that.
So I don't have a kid in the high school, but I understand that, you know, this this issue is probably most prevalent in the high school because you've got kids who are in that age group of, you know, their their social scene is the very most important part of their life at that time. And so, you know, even at the elementary schools, every single kid that walks through the door of school has to feel safe. They have to feel welcome, and they have to feel included. And so I think, you know, in the classroom and in each school, you know, having a sense of community in each each school. It's a lot easier in the elementary schools because they're smaller. But just being able to embrace, you know, our differences and celebrate those differences and be able to, you know, make everybody feel welcome. Because not everybody is comfortable coming to school every day because sometimes they don't feel like they're, they're welcome. And so we need to do our best, you know, just as a community, as others have said, to try to make every single kid feel welcome and safe and included. And there's a lot of different ways to do that. I have 30 seconds, which, like Christie said, is not enough time for this question, but it's really important, especially when we relate it back to mental health.
DEI has been something that I've been advocating for for many years, prior to it being this hot topic that started in 2020. A lot of, lot of what I do, volunteering outside of school, really revolved around equity inclusion. So with foster care, a child that has is less fortunate than a child in Rockford who may be more fortunate should be able to get the same education, play the same sports, get the same opportunities. So that's for all students. And also from the inclusion side, being a volunteer in the world of disabilities, I wanted them to be included. I'm a volunteer and help individuals with Down Syndrome, Reed, and I have learned and just realized the importance of them having those same abilities as any other child. They can learn too. And, you know, part of our life They can learn too, and, you know, part of our life now has revolved around giving them opportunities. And so, my husband and I have a business where we hire people with disabilities because we believe they deserve the same as anybody else. So, when we say all, we have the opportunity, or we have the, we have to do and give every student an education, so all students deserve the same, so.
I'll just say quickly, as has been mentioned, you know, we have societal issues, Rockford's no, this is not unique to Rockford, and we're virtual exception. Survey data was mentioned, we did get a readout at the ISAC meeting last week on survey data from our high school students and staff. That clearly showed we have some work to do in this area where there's a big discrepancy between how students feel about this topic and how staff does. There are big discrepancies, some significant differences in how certain groups of students feel versus other groups of students, and so, we've got some work to do. It's a complex problem. I wish it, I wish the onus didn't fall, at least in part, on the schools to have to solve it, but again, we have to meet kids where they are, and if we want all kids to be able to learn, then we've got to figure out how we can create the learning environments that, that allows them to do that, and this is, this is part of that recipe. The root causes of that problem are complex. The solutions, I, I don't know all the answers to that. I'm pleased with the work that's being done around asking those questions, getting the data, analyzing it, and figuring out how we begin to, to make improvements in this area, because it is necessary and it isn't, it is important. Rockford kids will graduate and go other places, and we want them to be ready to thrive wherever they, wherever they go, whichever path they choose.
So, I think we're well aware as a district, I think that this is a growth area for us right now. When I first joined the board, I got, started right away working on our strategic plan for the next three years, and we were hearing from our community that this was an area they wanted us to work on, from our students and staff that they wanted that. We have done the data collection and have the statistical numbers to show us that, yes, this is something that we need to work on. And under the leadership of Ms. Wilson Crawford, we have a great DEI committee that is actively working on this, putting together resources, working with our teachers, and working to make advances in this area, because one of our collective commitments to this district is that we will take collective responsibility for the success of every student. And to have them be successful, they need to feel included, and they need to have the tools that they need to have the same academic experience as their classmates.
Thank you once again for having me here tonight. I have, I have really dedicated probably a good fifteen years of volunteer work towards our district in terms of, I've been a PTO president, I've been a committee chair, I've been later school advisory council chair for years, and, but most, some of my most important work that I've done is, is with Friends of Kent County Schools, and what I did with that was really kind of look at the funding inequalities that existed. When, when I put Michael in first grade, who's now twenty-one, they had seventeen, eighteen kids in their class. A couple of years later from that, because of the major funding cuts that were, were happening and the erosion of local control and funding and from a world-based foundation district, your class sizes were at twenty-two and twenty-three. That's very hard to do. It's very hard to give those kids the, the learning that they need and, and create a foundation of learning when you've got twenty-four kids in a, in a first-grade class and we're teaching them, you know, how to read and write. So, I really spent a ton of time in Lansing advocating, testifying in Senate and House bills about legislation that was good for this district and, and legislation that was going to cost the district a lot of money, and, and really fought against the funding inequities. I mean, for years, our sales has had two thousand dollars more per kid than we've ever got. So, to be in a district like this and have the opportunities that we give our kids, that was a long-fought battle, and, and finally this year, I mean, you can see the gains. We used to get sixty-seven hundred dollars a kid. You know, fifteen years later, we're going to get ninety-one hundred dollars. Like, the amazing things that we can do with that money is really going to shape our children and, and the education that they're going to get here. So, it's, it's been very important to me to be involved in that process and to volunteer in that process, to create parent groups that are grassroots throughout the state. But I, I really look forward to your, your support and your vote on November eighth. I think I have a lot of experience, and I would love to give all of my time and energy to our kids. Thank you.
So, Rockford schools will benefit from having me as a board trustee, because I'm a high-energy, hard-working woman who is measured in her decision-making and looks to build coalitions wherever possible. I graduated from James Madison at Michigan State University, where I majored in social relations, which is a program that focused on government policy and how it affects women, immigrants, and minorities. Then I went and worked for the mayor's office in the city of Lansing, where I focused on community relations. From this experience, I've learned what it was like to, to work in a diverse community with varying concerns. Through active communication with the Lansing City Council, various groups, we were able to work together to create prosperity and safety in Lansing that benefited the whole community. I left that position to attend Michigan State Law School, which is probably the most academically challenging experience of my life. It trains your mind to approach questions from all angles and think about how the answers are going to play out in the past, the present, and the future. Since my graduation from law school, I've worked with my husband at our real estate brokerage. I'm so passionate about the financial, social, and emotional and spiritual value of homeownership, and how that affects your faith life, how it affects who your friends are, how it affects where and how your children are educated. Each, each decision and each client's transaction is different and has a cascading effect. So, I strive to, to serve my clients by providing predictable professional results and do what's in their best interest. So, dealing with each client one-on-one has taught me the importance of everyone's experience and how every interaction, every outcome matters. So, my experience in the public and private sectors will make me an asset to the board. And in this time of tension and divisiveness, we need people in the community who can lead with intelligence and not ideology and ego. We need leaders ready to make hard decisions and, and work with the community on those hard decisions. So, thank you so much for your support. Thank you so much for this great conversation tonight.
I'm really happy to see this many people in the room, and so, I just wanted to say thank you, and there's a lot of people in here who've been super supportive throughout this, this wild ride so far of campaigning, something I never thought I would be doing in my life, but here I am. And, you know, I feel like we're at a really good place in Rockford Public Schools. We've got a new superintendent, and I'm really excited to see some of the positive changes that might come as a result of our new leadership. And I also feel like it's time for some new perspectives on the school board to, you know, provide some fresh ideas and fresh perspectives in supporting policies that are going to set up our students for success. And so, you know, I feel like just my experience in the classroom puts me at an advantage to sitting on a school board and knowing the struggles that teachers experience on a day-to-day basis, on an hour-to-hour basis. And I feel like that experience is really going to bring a lot to the school board, to be able to, you know, do, do what we can for the teachers and attract and retain the best possible teachers in the district, and, you know, for what's best for our children in the district. So, thanks for coming out.
So, as the current school board trustee, I want to strive to continue to make Rockford a great school district, a destination district, because I'm proud to be here and want all residents to always feel proud to live in Rockford. Rockford schools is important also to the community. They truly need to work together for future generations. Many people have asked, why in the world are you running again for school board? Because of all the chaos. It has been a huge distraction from what we have wanted and needed to focus on, but truly I'm running because I love kids and have a passion for them. So much has changed in their lives in the last few years, and the experiences they're having are so different from when we were in school. School is often the only constant and consistent piece in their lives. We get caught up in politics and news, and we forget what is most important, and that truly is the kids. Being a casa, again, I, I talk about it often, has taught me so much, but the number one thing is that many roles schools play in a child's life that many of us, especially in our community, take for granted each day. Today, I'm standing before you, asking for your vote, not because I have my sights set on any type of recognition, but because I truly care about kids in Rockford, and I care about the Rockford community. I'm committed to being honest and transparent. As you can see from all my volunteering, I am invested in students, in education in this community. My vision for Rockford Public Schools is that each student receive a well-rounded education that challenges and prepares students for after-graduation. I believe that too many parents and stakeholders have placed responsibility for education in our students and the teachers in school. As members of this community, we all have a responsibility in education. Again, I want to thank you all for being here and thank Rockford Forward for hosting the event. As we wrap up tonight, I want you to know, your vote does make a difference, and your opinions matter. Together, we make Rockford better.
Thank you. We have a great school district, that's just objectively true. Rockford Public Schools is the reason that we chose to live and raise our family here, and we are grateful to be here every day. Rockford Public Schools is well-known across the state as a leader, a quote "lighthouse district" that others look to for guidance and best practices. We want to continue to be that. That doesn't happen by accident. It's thanks to a very supportive community, a dedicated and talented team of education professionals, that's our administrators, our teachers, our support staff, all working together to achieve our goals as we collectively defined in our RAMS eleven strategic plan. I do think it's important to understand that as an individual trustee, I have no more authority than my neighbor who's not on the board. We operate as a team of seven in a governance role. My hope for this election is the community will look at the slate of candidates and vote for the candidates you think will work well as part of that team. Candidates that support public education, candidates that have a track record of volunteering, of doing the work to positively support kids in schools, candidates that are in this for the right reasons, and most importantly, candidates that put students first, all students, going back to the last question, all students. We have an obligation as a public school system to support and educate all of our kids so they can reach their full potential and be successful after they leave Rockford Public Schools. Thank you very much for having us tonight.
I'm here because I'm passionate about our students and our teachers and our administration. We have a, a great thing here in Rockford, and I want to keep us moving forward, and I want to keep supporting our administration and the work that they're doing. You know, under the direction of Mike Cuneo and our finance department, we're making data-driven decisions in how we spend our money. When do we refinance bonds? When do we invest in buildings? How do we respect your dollars and what you have entrusted us with? We have a general fund balance that keeps increasing, and we're in a better place than we used to be. Ms. Wilson Crawford and her department have been working on closing our salary gaps so that we can work on attracting and retaining high-quality educators for all of our students. There's a teacher shortage, there's no doubt about that, but our administration is working hard to address that challenge. Under Mike Ram's leadership, we have curriculum getting consistently developed and improved so that all of our students have an equal experience across our district. And those are all things that go towards providing our kids with an education so that they're all going to be successful when they leave our doors, and I want to keep supporting them in that work so that we can keep building our tradition of excellence through our high-quality schools.
I'd like to thank you guys all for coming. You guys came because you wanted to hear what we had to say. I want to tell you that I believe all seven of us are qualified to do this. We're no better than the other one. We all have our different qualities, we all have our different goals, we all have our different focus, and I ask you to go out and do your homework and look and see what the history is and what, why people are running. The people, I, I can tell you that I was, my family didn't want me to do this, and my fiance didn't want me to do this, and I'm doing it because I want to do, keep doing what I'm doing, only for two years. But if you want honest and transparency, ask me, I'll tell you. The only consistency on the administration since I've been here is Mike Cuneo. He and I are the longest-serving, everybody else has been through there. I have nothing to gain from this. Everybody run in here, we're not running for the money. We get paid zero, and we give tens and hundreds of hours a, a year back to the school. We have to have a background check on us as elected officials to be in the school. I, I just think that any one of us would be a good candidate, I'm not saying I'm better than the others. I just ask you to do your homework, and, and our job is to listen to you. Come in here and ask, you guys asking us to do something when we have eight thousand other, or let's say fifteen thousand other parents out there in the community, we have to listen to. The people that come to our meetings are only a small portion, and we get, we get feedback from everybody, and we got to do what's right for all of our people, all of our students, all of our teachers, and all of our residents. Thank you.
These are unpaid people doing this job for your benefit and this community, and I think they did an outstanding job tonight, and as you leave, let's give them all a round of applause.